Yes, I got the word, thank you.
It's time to call the meeting to order. If we would like to ask everyone to please silence your cellphones, just remember to do it myself, so. At this time, we will have our invocation by Commissioner Betsy Hester and our pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Judy Herbert. Everyone, please stand.
Please pray with me, let's bow. Dear God, we thank you for the beautiful day that you've given us today, and we thank you that we live in this country where we may gather peacefully and discuss issues. I thank you for the commissioners who are here tonight and the administrative people who serve us, thank you for our constituents, thank you especially for our deputies in our sheriff's department, thank you for EMS, thank you for our emergency personnel and our communications, thank you for the people who serve in our armed forces, and thank you for our educators and our education department that we have in our wonderful county. Dear God, there's so many other things I could thank you for, but please be with us and guide us this evening. In his name I pray, amen.
Please say with me the pledge to the greatest country in the world. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, we will have roll call if everyone has signed into your meeting app. Is everybody's IT working? Is everybody able to get on? I'm hearing things head shaking, no. I'm gonna back out and start over on mine. Yeah, it's still saying, please wait until roll's called. There we go. Everybody got theirs up and going? Please mark your present button.
Commissioners Alsbrooks, Alsbrook, excuse me, Nations, Story and Sturgeon absent.
We have heard from all of them, out of town and issues, other issues, but next we have approval of the minutes. They were emailed to you. We have a motion by Commissioner Dwight Jones and the second by Commissioner Paul Webb. Are there any additions or corrections? Saying none, if you're ready to vote, press your yes button, oppose your no. Record the vote, please.
Twenty yes, zero no.
Minutes are accepted. Do I still have to name an address?
No, they don't have to speak it out loud, they just would state their names for the record.
Okay, all right. Next, we have citizens' communications. Our rules allow for three minutes per person. If you would, when you come to the microphone, please state your name. And first, we have Jane Sadler.
Good evening, my name is Jane Sadler. I live at 4650 Gannabranche Road in Thompson Station, and tonight I'd like to talk about traffic and infrastructure. In our southern area, we're starting to see quite an influx of subdivisions. The vast majority of these subdivisions are being approved by the town of Thompson Station, however, there's some that will be coming in for the county. We need to start thinking of traffic as not only just a movement of people to and fro, but as a health and safety issue. It's imperative that people be able to get to their medical and that medical can get to people. If we continue to develop the subdivisions in the area, and in a case of this town of Thompson Station, we'll have over 700 houses within the next three years that are coming on board. 700 additional homes equates to approximately about 1,400 cars, thinking of a normal mother and father in each with a car, not to mention the children that'll be coming. In my area, we're being severely impacted by, it wasn't a decision of you all, but it was a decision of the town of Thompson Station, to bring in things like the First Bank Amphitheater. We're seeing a tremendous amount of traffic on concert nights. I would love to see Williamson County, look at the other towns, Fairview, Spring Hill, Thompson Station, even if we're going out into the unincorporateds of College Grove, Nolansville. Let's talk about traffic, let's talk about where you're developing, and let's make sure that as we're doing this, that it's upstream and downstream, the minimum impact to people. I'm a lifelong resident of Williamson County. I've seen traffic go from a five-minute drive to a 25-minute drive in a lot of areas, and it's very disheartening to know, and I know that we have a lot of people moving into this county, that think a 25-minute drive is nothing. I'm sorry, it is something, and it's especially something when it comes to EMS, fire, safety. If it takes a fire truck an additional five minutes to get to your home, you've lost your home. If it takes an additional five minutes for an ambulance to reach your loved one, while it may not be a death sentence for them, it's very possible that it could lead to increased medical expenses, long rehabs. We've got to start looking at traffic and infrastructure as health and safety, and I'm asking each one of you to start working with the cities within Williamson County so that we know what's happening and how we're getting our traffic and our infrastructure set up for the benefit of all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Joshua Sadler.
So I'd like to speak today to kind of build on that same point.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Joshua Sadler, 4650 Gannabranche Road. So I'd like to build on the last point about urban growth and development. So one of the issues that we've been running into, particularly in the unincorporated areas of Bethesda, Thompson State, Bethesda, Patensville, and even Rutterville, is that as these cities begin to expand, as Franklin and Thompson Station begin to plan their urban growth boundaries as they're required to by the state every 20 years, they've begun to carve out areas of the unincorporated areas where they'd like to continue growth and expansion. Now, unfortunately, the people in the unincorporated areas don't have a voice in these procedures. We've gone to Thompson Station multiple times to voice concerns about the development that they've approved on Pleasant Creek, Briar Hill Estates. These subdivisions are going to cause undue strain on our infrastructure, they're already impacting our lives while not allowing us to direct, and while we don't benefit from any increase in tax revenue from these sources. So one of the things that we'd really like to see is for the county to step up in any way that they can to help mediate these issues where the conflicts arise with the unincorporated areas. We don't have a voice in these cities, and these cities are allowing developers to just move through and bulldoze us out of the way. So any support that we can get from the county would be greatly appreciated, we desperately need it. And if there's any restrictions at the state level, that I heard it from Thompson Station, that the county can't do anything because state laws specifically prohibit the county from stepping in and limiting what the cities can do in certain areas, you have a platform and you have a voice that the state is bound to listen to, where as a single citizen, I really don't. So if you could send something to the state to express your concerns or your wish for change in any way, it would be greatly appreciated, we desperately need it.
Thank you. Next, we have Connie Regulie.
I've given everybody a handout, too, I'll discuss that at the end. My name is Connie Regulie, and I reside on Wykel Road East in Brentwood. I am here as a citizen and an attorney for a young man known as J. H. J. H. was in the Williamson County Detention Center in the fall of 2013, not because he was violent or selling drugs, but because he suffered from a brain injury that interfered with his ability to reason. His mother had asked to have him released for an evaluation, for an inpatient rehab, and when she was unable to complete it in one day, the judge ordered that he be returned to the detention center. If you were in the detention center, you would find that it's a jail for children. It is a jail with cells 11 by 7 that a child can be put in solitary confinement, and that is what happened to J. H. He would spend three weeks in solitary confinement, cut off from his mother with only limited access to his father. Then he was assaulted by an employee of this county. The judge ordered that he stay, that the child stay in solitary confinement, cut off from all contact with his parents, and did not provide any victim intervention. We later found that videos had been purposely concealed that would have demonstrated the grooming by Juan Cruz earlier that afternoon. The investigation did ensue that night, which included DNA samples from the perpetrator and J. H., and Juan Cruz was indicted. Due to the negligence of the district attorney's office, Cruz was not properly charged with the crime, and in January 2016, when the trial did occur, the DA was not able to use the DNA evidence as evidence of the crime. All of the victims' rights provided under statute were ignored, and it was not until the third day of the trial that we knew that the DA had screwed up. I don't think that you can imagine what that incompetence did to my client, and we won't spend time tonight describing how many times his PTSD has been triggered and events occurred that could have cost him his life. In the meantime, I took the issue to federal court, and the Sixth Circuit found that the solitary confinement of J. H. was excessive punishment and a violation of his constitutional rights. But under the legal theory of qualified immunity, which gives state actors one free screw-up, Williamson County employee McMahon and Williamson County escaped liability. So why am I here? J. H. still has an opportunity for justice. The only defendant left in this case is Juan Cruz. What I want from the county commission is to say that the Williamson County taxpayer shall not be strapped with the legal fees and expenses of Juan Cruz. In his criminal and civil trials, Juan Cruz has been represented by Carl Pulley, Raquel Abel, Jacques Cabell, and Kelly Haas. Last Friday, Attorney Kelly Haas told the federal court that she would now add co-counsel. During his deposition, Cruz admitted that he did not pay for his civil attorneys. I have an open records request to the county for the disclosure of the amount of funds paid for the criminal and civil defense of Juan Cruz, whether for legal fees, deposition expenses, or experts. As taxpayers of Williamson County, we want to make sure that this commission affirmatively resolves that no monies will be paid for the defense of Juan Cruz. What I've handed you in the handout today is, one, the article that came out in the paper, but also excerpts from the Sixth Circuit opinion that demonstrates that he was, his constitutional rights were violated, and he was subjected to excessive punishment. Thank you.
Excuse me.
My name is Elizabeth Harris, and I live on Cottonport Drive in Brentwood. This past Friday, I learned that after eight grueling years, we might finally have a chance at justice for my now-young adult. As a mother who has fought for her son since he was 10 years old, after suffering the debilitating onset of a not very well-known brain disease, I implore that you take an interest in what is happening to our youth who may end up in the Williamson County Juvenile Detention Center. The taxpayers paid a handsome price to ensure Judge Sharon Guffey's protection from justice. I need to say that without a doubt, if each resident of our county could hear the facts of this case, they would unanimously agree that their hard-earned money should not be spent to defend a pedophile. As a small business owner in Williamson County since 2001, I can honestly say that I'm sorry our juvenile detention center is nothing other than a steel jail where our children are locked in a cage and traumatized. And I'm sorry that my son was a victim of it, but he does deserve justice. Please do not rob my son of justice by funding the defense of Juan Cruz. Justice has been due my son since 2013 for the cruel and unusual punishment which was forced upon him in this county. Do not fund Juan Cruz's defense, please. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes citizens' communications. Next, we have communications and messages. I have one announcement that I'll make, and then we'll have the proclamation. We have a ribbon cutting for the new animal center. It'll be the 28th of February from 1 to 4, everyone is invited. Again, the ribbon cutting is on the 28th. And next, we have a proclamation, and Dwight and Tom, are y'all gonna?
Tang team.
So I flipped a coin, Diane, and I lost. Most of us all know, we had a deputy that got shot in District 1 two weeks ago. Currently, today, went back in to see a surgeon, had a wound vac installed, so he could not be with us tonight. So I know that's painful in itself, I've had two of them. So we wanted to bring the deputies up, just to show some support from the county commission. Myself and Tom got together, just, and I'll read it, and I think everybody's got it on your desk also. Proclamation of appreciation to Williamson County's law enforcement professionals. Whereas the law enforcement officers of every rank and file have chosen a profession that puts their lives on the line every day for the citizens of our community. Whereas, we acknowledge and appreciate the brave men and women who work to keep us safe, knowing that they often make split-second decisions that could have saved a life or property, as well as placing their own lives in danger. Whereas, we believe law enforcement is essential to maintaining our freedoms, and we firmly support them in their daily task, risk and task on behalf of the citizens. Whereas, the Williamson County Board of Commissioners wishes to acknowledge the law enforcement professionals throughout the county who have desired to serve and are guided by the principles and justice and have the highest ethnic standards. Now let there be further resolved that the Williamson County Board of Commissioners meet on a regular session on the 14th day of February. Hereby shows appreciation to law enforcement professionals throughout the community for their tireless dedication to their profession, and there be further resolved that we express and respect each of them by answering their respective calls to serve and protect the citizens of Williamson County. Myself, Tom, Chairman Little, and Mayor Anderson have signed it. So Dusty, we want to present it to you, and hopefully you can share with your whole department.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for all of our guys here, this means a lot to them. And just so y'all know, Chandler had the bullet taken out Friday, no major damage to his shoulder, and like I said, had a wound vac put in today, be out for a couple more weeks, but appreciate everything the county has done, there's been several fundraisers out there, and I think he's gonna be okay for a time. But again, thank y'all for this, I know it means a lot to these guys right here, and we thank y'all. Thank you, guys.
Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if I could, I'd have Nina come on up and give us a snapshot of the county for the last 30 days or so.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. In your packets this evening, we have our December budget month-end report. We're tracking on target, nothing unusual to report to you for that month. The Cool Springs Conference Center December report, we did have a profit of $56,917. The education impact fee report, life to date, since we initiated this, there's been a little over $95 million collected on this. Total available for allocation is $45.5 million. For the month of December, on our privileged tax collections, we collected $1,184,000. That's all of our reports this evening. Anyone have any questions?
Are there any questions? Saying none, thank you, Nina.
Mr. Chairman, you've got to length the agenda, I'll answer any questions you may have at this time.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Good evening, Mayor. Happy Valentine's. Sorry you're here, like the rest of us, on Valentine's Day, but the Sadlers brought up a good point about the urban growth boundaries, we've had a lot of discussions about that. Where are we in our discussions with the municipalities on that?
Mr. Lawrence, if I could, I'm gonna let Legal Counsel, as he's eating some chocolate, address that. We have been, while he's chewing that up and getting a drink, I'll kind of fill in for him, but we have been meeting for the last several months and kind of let him take you down from the legal processes so the people understand that spoke at the public hearing.
Yeah, we are in the process of going through the technical aspect of looking at those growth boundaries, municipalities are coming up with their proposed UGBs, we'll then match those up and see if there's any overlap, if there are any conflict between those. When we think we've gotten to a technical compliance with it, then we'll start the statutory process, which will open up a six-month period of public meetings and then adoption by the respective legislative bodies. So far, very little conflict in the process, everybody's working smoothly, they've got a very good mediator or facilitator for those meetings, I think it's been a very productive case so far, and then we'll look at enforcement mechanisms and how long an agreement between those entities might last, so we don't want to necessarily wait another 20 years, but we certainly want them to be in place for a number of years.
Okay, Mayor, just one more question. You had a big concern that the municipalities were gonna want more land when they redrew their growth boundaries. Is that proving to be the case? And is it?
I think interrupting you, but I think in some areas, we've seen some of the cities extend the boundary lines out. That is, that was not unexpected to me or to most of the committee members, but some of them had pulled back. You'll see some of the cities reducing some of their current urban growth boundaries. I know in the 3rd District out towards Bethesda, College Grove area, a petition has been signed by, how many, Judy?
About 300.
300, out in the area, they're not comfortable with extending the lines out there, so ultimately, all of the cities and the counties are working together with the professional people, as Jeff said, they're going through the technical aspects of it. You'll have plenty of time in which to get in, get in your remarks to these folks that spoke here tonight. They'll have plenty of opportunity to communicate with their county as well as their city.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, good evening. Kind of piggybacking off Commissioner Lawrence, especially kind of talking about, for example, the amphitheater that was built in District 2 by the city of Thompson Station, for those of us that have districts that were affected by the traffic, we got quite a few calls and emails wanting to know what could be done, and a lot of times, I feel like I'm just telling them, it's out of my control, that was done by the city. What options as a county body do we have for some of the growth decisions being made by the city? So I have something to tell people if I can, other than, I'm sorry, contact the mayor of that particular city.
So I don't know that Joe was here to get down into the weeds with you, but when that first concert hit, it was a massive traffic nightmare, as the lady spoke about, and some efforts were made in dealing with Thompson Station, because it's in their jurisdiction. Eddie Hood, the sheriff, many others, kind of pushed for getting some different signalization on the light out in that area, but at the end of the day, when a city decides to do something, there's not a lot, our jurisdiction will stop where there starts, and I know you know that. It's utopia to think that all the cities and the counties can always work together. We try, and that's through this effort of the urban growth boundaries that Greg, Commissioner Lawrence was talking about, just getting everyone back at the table after 20 years ago. I wish I could address all of those phone calls that you got, because I gotta assure you that we got our share in our office, too, want us to go out and fix it, but that line's pretty distinct on what we can do. Bobby might could address it from, Christie is really the one handling it, I won't put Bobby on the spot, but Christie is working very hard with trying to get these cities to understand that what you do does affect the counties, and what the county does, we affect the cities also.
But ultimately, am I correct that the decisions the cities make, the county, us as a body, have no authority to override their decisions that they make within the county, even though it does have spillover effects into our county?
That's where you hope you've got good communication, and it's to my opinion now that that has gotten better. There's still a lot of traffic. Anytime you have a major event at a particular area like that, you're gonna have traffic, and you're gonna have traffic issues that go with it, but it's not as bad as that first time.
Thank you, Mayor.
I don't know how you weigh that, but maybe you do it on phone calls, but...
Commissioner Hudson.
Just quick to talk about this again, more in depth. Let's say, for instance, the building of houses and the infrastructure, the building of houses increases the burden on the county with supplying additional officers for the sheriff department. We have a, just an increasing burden, is there something that we can do with the city, such as Thompson Station, that doesn't have police officers of their own, with it being, without a tax burden on the citizens, of course, but maybe sending a bill to Thompson Station, saying, hey, you keep increasing your, the homes, now it's time for you to get some law enforcement, or this is what's gonna happen?
So I'll need a little help here. Has it been four years, five years ago? Paul, you may remember this, Thompson Station, as you have expressed, does not have law enforcement in their community. It's been more than five years, because they came to us and they funded a half a position the first year, and this was five or six years ago now that I think about it, and I think this last year, they up to?
They're up $100,000.
Yeah, they pay $100,000 for some of the offset of having a police department or department. Thompson Station, up until, just in the last three or four years, we had another city in Nolansville for their fire protection and law enforcement community. They rely on the sheriff, and the sheriff is obligated to be able to, he can go anywhere he needs to in the county to enforce the rules and regulations of the law. But we try to reach out to them the best we can, but at the end of the day, the area of law enforcement, you still have to provide it, even if they don't want to tax their citizens for it. you still have to provide it, even if they don't want to tax their citizens for it.
Anything else? Thank you, Mayor. Director of Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a number of items on your agenda this month, and as I often do, I'm gonna give you a little bit of an update on our growth. As of January 31st, we have forty-two thousand two hundred and eighty-two students in our early childhood through 12th grade program. And I've mentioned at a couple of discussions that two years ago, when the governor had the schools close for the fourth quarter, the spring of 2020, when we did our planning, we lost around fifteen hundred or so students, and most every public school system in the state did during that time. We projected that we would return that growth within about two years. We've gained back that plus about seven hundred students in about a year and a half. So if you factor in our growth projections, we are about nine hundred and sixty students over what we projected into first month this school year, which would have been September 21. So one of the items on your agenda is the teachers to address that growth. So a truism for us is we continue to grow, and I'm really proud of our teachers and the work we're doing. We have another item on your agenda that parallels one of the county government's agenda items for pay to deal with market condition changes as the market is really changing fast in the middle of this fiscal year. Certainly open to any questions you all have.
Are there any questions? Seeing none?
Thank you.
Williamson Medical Center.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for having us tonight. I'm gonna start off with a little bit of good news, not great news, but good news. Our inpatient COVID census today was twenty-five. And during this recent Omicron surge, we saw our census around Christmas at fourteen. Seven days later, it was in the forties, and another seven days later, it was fifty-four. And over the last five weeks, we've been hovering in the mid-thirties to low forties the entire time. Over the last four days, we've been in the twenties, and we've seen that volumes in our ER have gone down. So it looks like good news. It looks like this surge is waning, and so hopefully, next time I come to report next month, I'll have great news. Some community or some total stats during the pandemic, we treated fifty-seven hundred and sixty-five COVID-positive patients. We hospitalized close to two thousand over that time, and we performed about forty-one thousand COVID lab tests. From a community service standpoint, during the last quarter ending in December, our EMS team provided approximately four hundred and thirty-five staff hours at special events, including high school football games, 5K events, the Dickens Christmas, and some other events. Our EMS team responded to fifty-four hundred and six nine-one-one calls. And we provided about fourteen hundred hours of athletic training support for our school sporting events and school practices. As far as a quick project update, we have our groundbreaking plan for April 4th. You'll be getting an invitation in the next month or so. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mike Genesey, our CFO, to provide a financial report.
Good evening, thanks, Phil. I'm glad to report again, guys, we had a really strong month for December, both from a statistics standpoint, earnings standpoint, and cash standpoint. We've been reporting for the last few months, at least since I've been here, that we've been deferring elective, so to speak, surgery cases while we had difficulty staffing those beds. Both November and December were very strong from a surgical standpoint. You can see it in the earnings there. We exceeded all of our key stats, both on an admission basis and from our normal run rate standard. We earned one point five million dollars for the month. We generated a lot of cash. I think it was the strongest cash month we've had from an AR collection standpoint. We collected a hundred and eight percent of our goal, which is our net revenue. We've got a hundred and seventy-six million dollars of cash. Of course, that includes the bond proceeds that we got. Excluding that, we would be about eighty-three million dollars. We have a hundred and twenty days of cash on hand without the bond, and we report two hundred and twenty-six, but that includes the bond proceeds. And other than that, our debt coverage ratio is two point five, two point five-three. So all in all, a very, very strong month for us. Hopefully, we'll see that continue. I know that January, we closed January already, and so when that pent-up demand in the surgery cases, we've already seen wane down, which we anticipated that, so, but again, a good financial month.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to make a report? All right, moving on with the agenda. Next, we have our consent agenda. We have a motion by Commissioners. Whoops, I skipped a page, sorry. I skipped elections and appointments. Got a backup. Next, we have elections and appointments. Planning Commission four-year term expiring in three of twenty-two. Term expiring Sharon Hatcher, nomination Sharon Hatcher. Term expiring Robin Baldry, nomination Robin Baldry. There was a correction, that will be three of twenty-six is what the term expiring will be. We have the motion by Commissioner Lothers, the second by Commissioner Smith. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. He's working on it. Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty yes, zero no.
They are elected, I guess. Emergency Communications District Board of Directors, four-year term expiring in three of twenty-six, another typo. At-large member, John Allman, nomination John Allman. District 10 and 11, term expiring was vacant, nomination is Jeffrey Gray. We had the motion by Commissioner Beathard, the second by Commissioner Ricky Jones. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty yes, zero no.
And it passes. Next, we have the Agriculture Committee, two-year term expiring in February of twenty-six. It's a two-year term, sorry, twenty-four, excuse me. Two-year term expiring, Farmer position, Ruben Buck, nomination Ruben Buck. Farm Woman position, term expiring, Judy Herbert, nomination Judy Herbert. The motion by Commissioner Dwight Jones, second by Commissioner David Landrum. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty yes, zero no.
They are selected or appointed. Now we can move on to the consent agenda. We have our consent agenda up. We have the motion by Commissioner Smith, the second by Commissioner Hudson. Are there any additions or corrections or any comments? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty yes, zero no.
Do I read these, get to the record again, or is it just gonna be the one from this time? Thank you. Forgot to ask this morning. Resolution one, two dash twenty-two dash one. Resolution of the Williamson County Board of County Commissioners, approval of an intent to fund for twenty-eight million for improvements and new construction at Brentwood Middle School based on the results of the Brentwood Master Plan Study. Commissioner Beathard, the motion, Commissioner Dwight Jones II. The Budget Committee was five, four, zero against. Explanation, please.
Along with various improvements, this will also expand the capacity of Brentwood Middle School from twelve hundred to fifteen hundred students.
Commissioner Smith.
Good, Mr. Chairman. Let me just speak to this resolution along with the, actually, the first five resolutions. If you recall, at the January Budget Committee meeting, these five resolutions were deferred until February in order for us to take a look at the impact on our debt model. That was done. These projects were in the capital improvement plan. They may have been shifted in terms of timeline a little bit. We did, Nina and her staff and our debt consultant did take a look at the model, given these numbers, and as you heard, the Budget Committee approved this and the other resolutions, five to zero.
Are there any other comments? Questions? Commissioner Lothers.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clarify, we're seeing the Budget Committee was five, zero, but on our paperwork, it says four to one. Is that it?
If you look at the bottom, that was the, the report on the up was the January report.
If you look towards the bottom, that is from this. Got it, terrific, thank you so much.
Is there any other questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. Do you want to voice vote it? Is that okay? Yeah, okay, you can voice vote yours. There it goes. Record the vote, please. Resolution passes. Resolution two dash twenty-two dash two. Resolution of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners, approval of an intent to fund of two million, six hundred thousand dollars for the installation of synthetic turf football fields at Independence and Summit High Schools. The motion by Commissioner Smith, the second by Commissioner Beathard. The Budget Committee was five, four, zero against. Explanation, please.
And this one, as Commissioner Smith pointed out, is also a rollover from last month. This one will complete all the high schools, giving all of them synthetic turf football fields.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution two dash twenty-two dash three. Resolution of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners, approval of an intent to fund for one million, five hundred thousand dollars for the transportation building addition. The motion by Commissioner Beathard, the second by Commissioner Dwight Jones. Budget Committee was five, four, zero against. Explanation, please.
This will provide for additional bay and support space at the bus garage.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution two dash twenty-two dash four. Resolution requesting an intent to fund in the amount of eight million, seven hundred and five thousand dollars for the Williamson County Board of Education, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, major asphalt roofs and wastewater plant needs. The motion by Commissioner Beathard, the second by Commissioner Lothers. Budget Committee was five, four, zero against. Explanation, please.
As the title explains, this provides for asphalt roof and wastewater plant needs district-wide.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Lothers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to note on this, I had a good conversation with Mark Samuels from Williamson County Schools, and I just want to say, our Williamson County Schools does a terrific job connecting with our local municipalities and interfacing, and so even a portion of this that's being voted on tonight is going to help relieve some traffic and stacking issues at Nolan's Elementary School, along with another school in our district. But there's many projects that they're managing. But I just wanted to do that shout-out because I've just found that it really takes a partnering. We kind of discussed earlier about this role of municipal and county, but I think the Williamson County Schools is an example of doing it really well, along with a lot of our other departments. Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Nineteen yes, one no.
Resolution passes. Resolution two dash twenty-two dash five. Resolution of the Williamson County Board of County Commissioners, approval of an intent to fund four million dollars for the Phase Four replacement of Page High School. The motion by Commissioner Beathard, the second by Commissioner Smith. Budget Committee was five, four, zero against. Explanation, please.
This is for the final phase of expansion and replacement at Page High.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution two dash twenty-two dash six. Resolution amending the two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two general purpose school budget by three million, four hundred, four thousand, nine hundred, seventy-one dollars for the additional general ed and special ed teaching positions due to growth. The motion by Commissioner Beathard, the second by Commissioner Smith. School Board was two, four, zero against. Education Committee was three, four, zero against, and Budget Committee was five, four, zero against. Explanation, please.
As our population grows, so does the need for teachers. This is to fund more teachers for Williamson County Schools.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution two dash twenty-two dash seven. Resolution for approved mid-year raise of three percent for regular full and part-time salaried staff and one hour per hourly raise for regular hourly paid staff for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget year. The motion by Commissioner Beathard, the second by Commissioner Lothers. Explanation, please, Commissioner Beathard.
This gives a raise, a badly needed raise, to our exceptional teachers, staff, full-time and part-time.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button, opposed, your no. Anyone wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Nineteen yes, one abstain.
Resolution passes. Resolution two dash twenty-two dash eight. Resolution accepting donation of two thousand dollars to be used for the purchase of equipment for the Sheriff's Office and appropriating and amending the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two Williamson County Sheriff's Office budget by two thousand dollars, revenues to come from donations. The motion by Commissioner Hester, the second by Commissioner Herbert. Law enforcement, public safety was five, four, zero against. Budget Committee was. Budget Committee was 5-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Mason.
This is a resolution to accept donations. And this is a generous donation of $2,000 by Mr. Glenn A. Rickard to the William County Sheriff's Department for the purchase of equipment, which we greatly appreciate and thank.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
20 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 2-22-9. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2021-22 Election Commission's budget by $140,000. Revenues to come from County General Fund balance. Commissioner Smith, the motion. Commissioner Webb II. Budget Committee was 5-4-0 against. Explanation, please.
Well, as you're all aware, we've gone through redistricting, assessment of property, and all of that in the last several years. The requirements of the Election Commission Office to redraw the boundary lines of the districts require issuing the voter cards. All the postage and the printing of those cards are something that were not estimated and made part of this budget, and so this will come out of the County General Fund to cover those expenses.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
20 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 2-22-10. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2021-22 Juvenile Services budget by $35,000. Revenues to come from participant fees and detention contracts. The motion by Commissioner Mason, the second by Commissioner Hester. Law Enforcement and Public Safety Committee was 5-4-0 against. Budget Committee was 5-4-0 against. Explanation, please.
This is to amend the juvenile court budget for an additional $35,000 with the revenues to come from participant fees and detention contracts to help fund services such as drug screening, the Insight Program, and all of the other various services that our juvenile court provides.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please. Resolution passes. Resolution 2-22-11. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2021-2022 library budget by $91,175. Revenues to come from donations, contributions, and fines. The motion by Commissioner Webb, the second by Commissioner Dwight Jones. The Library Board was 7-4-0 against. Budget Committee was 5-4-0 against. Explanation, please.
As you can see, the fines and donations, especially one from the Friends of 50,000, very much appreciated by the Board of Trustees and the library staff, and this will be used to purchase new material for the library.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
20 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 2-22-12. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2021-22 Parks and Recreation budget by $7,290. Revenues to come from donations. The motion by Commissioner Guffey, the second by Commissioner Landrum. Parks and Rec Committee was 5-4-0 against. Budget Committee was 5-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These are funds received from the youth associations that the Parks and Rec Department uses to pay for officials and other needs for running the youth sports.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Commissioner Rainey. Commissioner Rainey. Your vote. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
20 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 2-22-13. Resolution accepting a donation from the DeMires family, DeMyers, on behalf of the Williamson County Animal Control and appropriating and amending the 2021-22 Animal Control Capital Projects budget by $2,500. Revenues to come from donations. The motion by Commissioner Smith, the second by Commissioner Dwight Jones. Budget Committee was 5-4-0 against. Explanation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a donation for a dog kennel at the new Animal Control Center, and we want to thank the DeMyers family for their generous gift.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
20 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 2-22-14. Resolution accepting a donation from the Fettie family on the behalf of Williamson County Animal Control and appropriating and amending the 2021-22 Animal Control Capital Projects budget by $2,500. Revenues to come from donations. The motion by Commissioner Tonaclyft, the second by Commissioner Dwight Jones. Budget Committee was 5-4-0 against. Explanation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, the Fettie family has made a donation to sponsor one of the kennels in the new animal center. It'll be in memory of Shelley Fettie, and we very much appreciate their gift.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please. Resolution passes. Resolution 2-22-15. Resolution accepting a donation from the Evergreen Family Fund and appropriating and amending the 2021-22 Animal Control Capital Projects budget by $2,500. Revenues to come from donations. The motion by Commissioner Beathard, the second by Commissioner Landrum. The Budget Committee was 5-4-0 against. Explanation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Green family, through their Evergreen Family Fund, have made this donation. Thatcher Green is here with us. Please stand up, Thatcher, and his sister Harbor, who could not be here tonight, but they have made this generous gift to the Animal Control Center to sponsor a kennel as well, and we're very appreciative of your gift. Thank you.
Glad to have you with us. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
20 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 2-22-16. Resolution appropriating and amending 2021-22 Animal Control budget by $3,000. Revenues to come from Greater Good for the Disaster Relief Grant Funds. The motion by Commissioner Smith, the second by Commissioner Beathard. Budget Committee was 5-4-0 against. Explanation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When the tornado hit Mayfield, Kentucky, they had problems handling their animal situation there. Our folks went there, and I think 21 cats were rescued and brought here. This is a reimbursement by the Greater Good charities to help offset some of the expense incurred in doing that rescue.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
20 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 2-22-17. Resolution appropriating and amending the various salary line items within the 2021-22 County General Solid Waste and Highway Funds. Revenues to come from respective unappropriated fund balance. The motion by Commissioner Smith, the second by Commissioner Dwight Jones. The Budget Committee was 5-4-0 against. Explanation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a mid-year increase for our county employees. This is within the structure that was approved previously by this body. What this is doing is simply spreading the funds out to the various line items where they need to go. And as we, as Mr. Golden mentioned earlier, we're able to do a mid-year increase for the teachers as well. We have the same sort of pressures on our employees, and in particular, the Sheriff's Department, as well as other departments, that we've been able to try and take care of so that we can continue to hire and retain the best employees possible.
Commissioner Webb.
Mr. Chair, I want to echo what Commissioner Smith said, that we need this in order to maintain the good staff that we have, but also recruit staff. But also because I'm working on the federal relief funds, I'll have to abstain from this vote.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
19 yes, 1 abstain.
Resolution passes. Resolution 2-22-18. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2021-22 Parks and Recreation budget by $677,650 to provide funding for the operation and maintenance of the recently acquired properties at Castle Park, cost associated with operating the upcoming Renaissance Festival. The motion by Commissioner Guffey, the second by Commissioner Dwight Jones. Parks and Recreation Committee was 5-4-0 against. Budget Committee was 5-4-0 against. Explanation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you all know, for the last several months, we've been processing the purchase of property out on 96 East, where the Renaissance Festival has been held for 30-something years. And we accepted the donation of the operation of the Renaissance Festival in conjunction with the Freemans for the next year or so, or more. But these funds are what are projected to be necessary for the operation of the festival this year during May. Now, we anticipate revenues from the festival more than covering the expenses that are being incurred. The Parks and Rec Department has already, through this year, generated more revenue, more than enough revenue to cover this particular amount, and there'll be revenue coming back to the General Fund from the operation of the festival.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Hudson, there we go. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
19 yes, 1 no.
The resolution passes. Resolution 2-22-19. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Williamson County, supporting the application and providing of providers seeking American Rescue Plan Act grant funding to provide broadband service to unserved and underserved areas of Williamson County. The motion by Commissioner Webb, the second by Commissioner Ricky Jones. Budget Committee was 5-4-0 against. Explanation, please.
Mr. Chair, the governor has made broadband a priority, and also the federal relief funds from the federal government have made broadband a priority. And so the county staff has been working with the broadband providers in the county to apply with the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development for grants to put broadband in those unserved and underserved areas. What this does is gives us the opportunity to work with those providers, to sign those contracts, and then bring them back to you once it's been approved.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've gotten several emails this week regarding broadband, and I have some questions probably for the mayor to answer. If you want to come on up, mayor. So the resolution says providers, so the main provider is really United Communications, though are there other providers in addition to that that are?
Oh, absolutely.
All the major providers are doing this.
AT&amp;T, Charter, Comcast, United. Seems like I'm leaving out someone.
Four majors.
Four majors.
Okay, and is it our expectation that if we get these funds, we will be able to cover the whole county? Are there certain sections of the county going to be left out?
I'll let the guy that's handling that answer that, Mr. Webb.
What's going to happen is the Tennessee Department of Economic Development is in charge of the grant funds through the state, and they use maps from the FCC that identifies the unserved and underserved areas in each county across the country. And then they have hired a consultant to dig down deeper and provide the information on what may be unserved. The FCC maps, which are a little bit out of date, don't show. And then they're also looking at those providers, those four providers that provide broadband service in Williamson County, to tell them where they have unserved areas. So they're trying to identify those. Now, keep in mind, this is unserved and underserved. You may not have speed as fast as you want it, but you've got internet broadband beyond the dial-up. And so the goal is to get everyone to 25-download, 3-upload megabytes, with the optimistic goal to have you at 100-download megabytes and 100-upload. And so if there's money out there, then that's the goal. And if necessary, we will take part of the ARPA federal relief money to supplement this, but there's a good chance that we won't have to. It just depends on how much money is in the state's grant fund. So there's still a lot to be determined, but the state will have those grants. They have to be submitted by 2:00 on March 15th, which is why we're doing this now.
Okay, and how are the projects prioritized? Because it seems like there's certain areas, like in my district, that are more densely populated than some other areas of the county that have gotten broadband, and some of my constituents have not. So how do they prioritize these projects?
Okay. The idea would be, if there are people in your area that are unserved or underserved, that don't have that 25-3 minimum, then they can send a note to the mayor saying that they request the broadband, and we will submit that as a package that's going to the Tennessee Department of Economic Development. They are the ones that are parsing through all of the applications from across the state to award those grant funds. And this, again, is money from the state, as well as money from the federal government to the state to put in broadband. It's up to the providers to put it in, but they want to get that money as well. And I know today that United and Comcast have submitted an intent to put in broadband in Williamson County, and that Charter has given an indication but did not file the letter of intent, but Charter says they want to apply for the grant as well in the southern part of the county. Now, United may look at areas in the eastern part of the county, but again, it depends on the maps that... on the maps that Tennessee Economic Development provides. In other words, they're not going to provide these federal and state supplements if an area already has that minimum broadband speed. But that's up to Tennessee Economic Development, not us.
So it sounds like what you're saying is, if we have constituents who don't have broadband and they want to get it, they should contact the mayor's office or send an email to the mayor?
Send that in with their address, and we are going to submit all of that to the Tennessee Department of Economic Development to make our cause, our case, for that grant funds out in Williamson County.
If I could jump in, also, we've made this passionate plea at different pressure points, in different function, different meeting, different WebEx meetings we've had. The, our Economic Development Board, which picks up the chamber, all the city mayors, city managers, they heard the same message. We've sent a message out through the schools. We're getting a lot of input, but you can never have enough because you're competing against someone else, Commissioner. So if you've got people, and I'm glad that you asked the question tonight, because it'll go over the airs again, the press is here, please send those in to Paul or myself so we can put them in the appropriate area, and particularly small business if you need it in your area. It's very important.
Well, a lot of people work from home. And one constituent said she's been given a hotspot by her employer, but it's still not very adequate. So what's the timeline? Once we get these requests in, do we know when the grant money might be available?
According to the Tennessee Department of Economic Development, they will receive those grants on the 15th, and it's their goal to have grants issued by the beginning of summer, which is June, and then start turning dirt, putting wires out by the end of the summer before the weather turns. We do know from talking to Comcast and United that that is feasible.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hester.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The mayor's office gets a lot of emails, and at this point, this is unusual. I'm asking our constituents to please email the mayor's office or Paul Webb, paulweb@williamsoncounty/tn.gov. And that's Paul and the mayor. And if you feel that you are underserved or unserved, please send an email, or shall I say, call the mayor's office.
Yeah, if you're not being served, you're not going to send us an email, more than likely. So you're going to have to give them the 790-5700 number.
You can go to McDonald's sometimes, get online, you know.
I'm not going to promote one business over another, but that's as good as any.
Well, shall I say, all right, I'll go through all the other ones later on. But anyhow, we do need our constituents to reach out and communicate as much as possible because we've had school that, we've had remote school. We really need this. I know especially in the Second District, First District, too, and the Third, well, all of our districts, we've got a lot of hills and hollers, and you've got to work hard to get, you've got to get broadband to those areas. Please, please communicate. Thank you.
Commissioner Lowthers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This may be a kind of a silly note, but I, we have, Chairman Little and I, we have residents in our district also that may have an Eagleville address, for example, but they're in Williamson County. And as we all know, the federal government does the post office, so you can have a Nolansville address and be in Nashville-Davison County, or in Rutherford County. You can have a Brentwood address and be in Nashville-Davison County. I was just going to ask, maybe this is a Paul question. When all this information goes in, and it has like, say, an Eagleville address, are they looking at the maps closely? I just don't want anybody to be overlooked because of this address system that we're not in control of.
I can't tell you what they'll do, but I do encourage anyone that comes in to put their actual business or home address, the street address, because Talafaro...
That's what it is, yeah.
Okay, yes, that's Eagleville, but that's in Williamson County.
It's a Williamson County address.
I received letters from them today.
Great, well, I appreciate that.
So it's important, the full address, not just Eagleville, but the full address.
I think they need to say Williamson County underneath it, too, just so we can note that, because I think there was some confusion. I find people all the time that think they live a certain place that they don't, but those folks are definitely Williamson County. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mayor. Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Commissioner Williams. Anyone who wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution two dash twenty-two dash twenty. Resolution accepting a donation of furniture, material, and labor from the Church of, on the Church, from the Church of the City on behalf of Williamson County Juvenile Services for the remodeling and furnishing of certain areas in the juvenile services facilities. The motion by Commissioner Mason, the second by Commissioner Hester. Law enforcement and public safety was five, four, zero against. Property committee was four, four, zero against. Budget committee was five, four, zero against. Explanation, please.
So if any of y'all have ever been within the walls of the juvenile court system, you will know that it is in, I'd say, dire need of sprucing up in some areas, and so this is a very exciting opportunity with the Church of the City to come in and donate not only furniture and accessory items, but also painting as well to make the area a lot more child-friendly because juvenile court just doesn't deal with children who are alleged to have been delinquent, but we also, they also deal with parental issues, child support, and so there's a lot of young children in that building. So this gives them a space where they can hang out, be relaxed while their parents are dealing with issues also in juvenile court. So this is a really exciting opportunity, and we are grateful to accept the donation.
Commissioner Hester.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Church of the City is my church, and I'd like to thank Darren Whitehead, our pastor and his wife, Brandy, for their special concerns about juveniles and their needs in our county, and also the financial gurus at the church who decided to do this. Very excited. Thank you.
There is a typo in the second whereas that we will correct that says the furniture listed on the attached, and the actual, it is in the body of the resolution, so there is no attachment, so that will be corrected. And the second note that I remember is that this is all stuff that can be moved to the new center also when it is built. So are there any other questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone who wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution two dash twenty-two dash twenty-one. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement between the City of Brentwood, City of Franklin, City of Fairview, Town of Nolansville, Town of Thompson Station, City of Spring Hill, and Williamson County, Tennessee for the reimbursement of costs associated with the continuity of Operations Plan Module. The motion by Commissioner Mason, the second by Commissioner Smith. Law enforcement and public safety was five, four, zero against. Budget committee was five, four, zero against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Mason.
So this is essentially an operations module system that will allow all of the municipalities within Williamson County to be able to talk to each other. So Williamson County is funding it as a whole, and then the municipalities will reimburse or contribute towards that. So this is an agreement to enter into that interlocal agreement with those municipalities so we can all benefit from that connectivity for our emergency responses.
Commissioner Hester.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In keeping with emergency responses, I wanted to go on public record and say that in District Two, we have a problem with 840 in Lewisburg Pike. At rush hour, it is dangerous. I will repeat, dangerous. During rush hour, please avoid 840 and Lewisburg Pike. This could be a major hazard for any emergency calls, any sheriff's deputies' calls, any kind of problem with medical, or fire, or robbery. So, thank you.
Are there any questions? Any other questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Commissioner Hudson. Anyone who wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Twenty yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution two dash twenty-two dash twenty-two. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to enter into a long-term site lease agreement with the Husky Family Limited Partnership. The motion by Commissioner Beathard, the second by Commissioner Smith. Property committee was four, four, zero against. Budget committee was five, four, zero against. Explanation, please. Commissioner Rainey?
This is simply to expand the parking area for the J.J.J. project that's about to begin. It's my understanding there will be no structures built on it. It'll simply be used for parking to catch the overflow.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. We need to mark Commissioner Hudson as absent. Anyone who wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please. Resolution passes. Resolution two dash twenty-two dash twenty-three. Resolution amending the rules, regulation, and procedures of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners concerning the date and time of the Board of Commissioners regularly scheduled meeting. The motion by Commissioner Morton, the second by Commissioner Beathard. Rules committee was five, four, zero against. Budget committee was five, four, zero against. And as a note, since this is outside of the October-November meeting, this will require a two-thirds vote to pass. Explanation, please, Commissioner Morton.
State comptroller's office has asked that we have our budget finalized before June 30th. Therefore, we are proposing to add an additional meeting on the Fourth Monday of June. That will be at 7:00 PM, would be just on adopting the budget. We would still have our meeting in July as well, but that would just be a regularly scheduled meeting, and this is being done to comply with comptroller Mumford's request.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Mason.
Just for clarification, would the Fourth Monday in June be an all-day meeting like we are typically used to in July, or would it just be a normal 7:00 PM meeting?
Seven PM.
All right.
No, that could still be all day, but we would start at 7:00 PM.
But we would just be considering the budget and not all the other resolutions. They will be heard at the regular July meeting, which will be moved to 7:00 o'clock instead of a day meeting. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Herbert.
Can you, is my speaker? Just to clarify, so the July meeting will be at 7:00 also and not 9:00? Okay.
We'll go have supper instead of lunch.
I know we don't get lunch. I really enjoyed that.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no. Commissioner Beathard. Anyone who wish to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please.
Nineteen yes, zero no.
Are there any other business to come before the commission at this time? Not, we'll entertain a motion. We are adjourned. That's a good thing my battery's dying.